October 1st meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board at 6:02 PM. We have Ty Richards, George Kingston, Bumor Vito, and John Torscher. I have to announce that this is an open meeting and in accordance with the open meeting law, it's being recorded both for the minutes and for LCAT. Is anyone else here recording the meeting? Bearing none, we will proceed. We have the minutes on September 17th. No, so we'll pass over the minutes. We will reopen. This is still a public hearing, right?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No.
That's right. We're done.
You forwarded.
We're done.
Yes.
Okay. So, we have, first thing on the agenda is the mixed-use zoning discussion. The Town Council Subcommittee has chosen not to attend tonight because they haven't had time to reach a conclusion yet. So, I'm not sure what discussion we have to go through.
We have members of the Subcommittee here that you may want to invite to the table to give you an update of the status.
If you care to.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, where do we stand?
Marilyn, you want to start?
The status of, well, you were at our first meeting. Connie was at our second meeting. We're about halfway through reviewing the proposal. Nothing has been voted on specifically to change, although I suspect there may be some modifications as we move forward.
We have another meeting on October 7th, I believe it is.
It's, do you know when it is? Is it the 7th?
Next Monday.
Yeah.
Yep.
At 10:30 at the library is our next meeting.
Yep. So, we are working through-
No, it's here. I'm sorry.
It is here, yes.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
So, we are, what do I want to say, going through the whole document, bringing up to the Subcommittee, putting it out there, thoughts and questions. We're taking it basically one step at a time as we go through the document. And, like I said, it's a work in progress and we're trying to do a meeting, what is it, once?
Every couple of weeks.
Every two weeks until we get through the whole document so that we can give a recommendation to the Council.
Do you have a timing for the Council hearing yet?
Not on the agenda as far as I know.
No, I mean, a target date?
As soon as we're done.
No, the Council won't even, well, I would assume the Council's not even going to put anything on until the Planning Matter Subcommittee lets them know that we have a recommendation for them, and then they'll schedule it.
We are looking to, we're just reviewing options with respect to inclusionary zoning. You know, that's out there. But, as I say, no decisions. We've looked at different bylaws from different communities and just, you know.
Well, thank you for the updating.
Okay.
I don't think we have anything to edit at this point. So, I appreciate you coming out.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Moving right along, we have a discussion of the master plan.
You do? So, I have borrowed from one of my colleagues the template for crafting the master plan. So, what I would like to do is, we had discussed loading everything on Google Docs and then working through Subcommittee via Google Docs. So, I can share with you that information now. I can, except I'm not, I am not used to Google Doc, so I have everything saved to my desktop and I'm sure somebody-
I'm not either.
Oh.
I use Dropbox.
Use Dropbox, well, it's-
Is it going to be on Docs or is it going to be on the Drive? We have a Planning Board Drive-
Yeah, it's all the information.
That we access. We have all the minutes and things on the-
You do?
The packets. Yeah.
Yeah.
You set that up?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Now, Bethany set it up for you for Google Doc. Yes, it'll be there and then we will also include the Subcommittee members.
Okay, that's different from Docs. Docs is a different application than Drive.
So, I have, you're on Drive or on Docs?
Well, I'm on a Drive called Planning Board Cases. It's a shared Drive which you should be able to access.
So, is it a triangular icon that you click on when you get to the site?
It's on, it's a triangle, a green, yellow, and blue triangle is Google Drive in, under the Google Suite.
Is it Planning Files?
Planning Board Cases.
Planning Board Cases. Okay, so you are set up.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I need to do is save what I have saved to my desktop to this folder. And, we have two outstanding issues. I needed a couple more names. I wanted you all to give me three to five names of people that you recommended for the, you were here. Were you here?
Two weeks ago.
For the stakeholder meeting. I have tentatively scheduled the stakeholder meeting that was discussed with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission several weeks ago for November 7th and November 8th. There would be two four-hour meetings. Only one is necessary for our stakeholders to attend so as not to take up too much of their time. The 7th will be from 4:00 to 8:00 at the library and the 8th, which is Friday, will be from 9:30 to 1:30. I believe at the Council on Aging, I need to confirm that. I'm still waiting. But, that will be, if you want to call it the listening session, public outreach, but that will be scheduled on those dates. More information to come.
And that's for the MVP?
Yes, because we're working on both at this simultaneous stage. So, the other people, again, the names I would still like to have, I have 18 names right now I would like to have because, as Emily had said, you invite so many, but a percentage find that it works to their schedule. So, if you could email me those names, that would be wonderful. George has emailed me his, I think we're all set, and Russ emailed me. But, please-
What's your hope for the amount total of people you'd like to have?
20 to 30. Yeah. And that way, hopefully, we'll get a nice cross-section of people. I haven't reached out to everybody yet. As I've been building the list, I've either called them or sent them a quick email. So, again, that's moving forward and-
For those who are watching on LCAT, the MVP is Municipal Vulnerability Plan, which is part of the master plan. And this is a plan to deal with natural disasters that could strike the town and whether or not the town infrastructure is appropriate for it. So, that's the plan we're discussing right here at the moment.
It's related to climate change and how we are best prepared to address climate change as we develop our master plan. We want to be mindful of certain method, modes of transportation, infrastructure, how there's, any of the elements might be of the master plan might be enhanced or better served through the consultation of how we are reacting or preparing for municipal, excuse me, for climate change in this municipality. So, what I'd like to do is, I would like to prepare you all to see what it is that I have procured from my fellow planner. And, it's actually broken down into the different elements. So, we would be using this as a model, knowing what type of verbiage we want to include as we create the master plan. So, do you, I guess at this point, I want to know if you, as a Subcommittee, had any thoughts? I know I've got an email from Connor, but, and I also got an email from you, John, too. So, is it, would you like to talk with the Planning Board about what your concerns are or what areas of specialization you want to focus on? Are the elements, are the elements? Would you want me to, I probably have your email if it is helpful.
Yeah, well, I guess I'll go first. I'm interested in almost all the different points of the master plan. Specifically, I'm interested in kind of the transportation area, how we can increase mobility for, you know, either the, basically anybody who wants to move around other than by car, either children, the elderly, anybody who wants to move around the town. I'm very interested in the mixed-use area as well. Those would probably be my two, my twos that I'm most interested in.
Yeah. I have a few different interests, things from land use to mixed-use, economic development, open space and recreation, general services and facilities, circulation, education, and technology.
Just a little bit.
So, most of the category is barring a few, but-
Very good. By the way, Connie, can we get at least cardboard name tag, nameplates of these people?
Yes, we absolutely can.
So, that people watch you on TV, know who you are because-
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of people do watch this on LCAT, as you're probably aware, and we need to make, be clear about what we're talking about and identify any three-letter acronyms that pop up all the time, so people might own them.
Avoid the four.
Uh, yeah, that's right. We're not talking about most valuable players.
Oh, we're not? Are you sure? You guys aren't the most valuable players? I think you are. So, and one, two, three. One of them did not get saved. And maybe while I'm working through this, was there areas that the Planning Board wanted to delve into?
Do you want to jump in?
I mean, my approach to this is that we need to have it. I think we need to, we're looking forward, and so I think we need to look at the open space land that we have, developable land, and think about how it would be most appropriate to encourage what development there is or not encourage depending on. But I think we need to be, you know, thinking about things like the impact of solar, which we've already been hit with, potential loss of agricultural lands, and potential build-out with new housing in town and the impact on schools and so on.
My, so I've been, you know, one of the things that I proposed or concerns to Connie is smaller housing, single-floor, smaller lots, the idea that this will allow aging population to stay within East Long Meadow, but have more affordable and more accessible housing, which would then allow younger families to move into the houses that are then vacated and we can kind of maintain a younger population moving in.
I know that's a real concern, and being in that category myself, I don't understand-
Where are the younger families moving in?
People are coming from, yeah. But certainly the impact on schools is important. The shifting of the economic structure in town and around us is something that is, we need to take note of. For instance, we're getting a lot more medical development, not just here, but in the towns around us. And those medical buildings employ lots of people, some of whom are highly paid and don't want to go on long commutes to Springfield. So, what impact does that have on who's going to be coming to town in the next 20 years, let's say? Those are the kinds of questions I think we need to think about going forward here. But I also think that there is a lot of this that, particularly the background information that we already have, was developed for the open space plan. So, things like the demographics, projected population growth, apologize a bit, some allergies that are making me cough, so. A lot of that we already have, and I think we can start organizing that as we start also thinking about the overall goals of the town. And in fact, since I've got the open space recreation plan, I can share that with everybody and what I can do actually, Connie, if you think it would be useful, would be to extract from that the demographic information and tables and so on, and distribute that through Connie to the group so everybody can see what we're looking at in terms of projected growth and what the population of the town looks like today, which in about a year and a half will have a new staff shot of that. But, well, longer than that, probably about three years. But, we've got the best staff shot we have, can have of who's living in town, how much they make, their education levels, things like that, which will help us get a vision of what the town is today and where it might be going.
When was that open space plan, like, last updated or created?
In August. And it is now sitting in Boston, waiting to be reviewed, okay? And they're talking November, December before we hear back from them because apparently everybody files their open space plans in September. And so, they've got a pile of them sitting on the desk.
So, I have a question specifically about demographics. Is the question not only where we are, but where we want to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Or where we are going, let's put it that way.
Well, there's a difference there. There is a difference there.
There's a difference, and the question is, how much control does the town have over where it wants to go? Okay, that's, you know, it's, we can talk about where we'd like to go and say, increase diversity and things like that. But when it comes to zoning, we have the zoning already. And to change zoning, for instance, to create smaller lots in A and AA would require a zone change or a zoning bylaw change, and that would impact the current landowners. So, we need to think about what we can and cannot do there, you know? It's, we don't have a blank sheet of paper. We have an existing vibrant and dynamic town, and we have to think about ways that we can incentivize the kinds of things that we want to do, recognizing that we can't just say, "Let's do it." Can you understand where I was coming from?
All right.
Yeah.
So, a lot of the goal, oh, I'm sorry, George.
No, no, right ahead, please.
No, a lot of the goals that we have are really just, really going to enhance where we're looking to go in the future then.
Yeah, if you, if you don't have a plan, you're just floundering around. On the other hand, the old military adage is that the best plans go away the minute you meet the enemy, and we all know that. But you still have to have a plan so that you can line things up and adjust as you go forward.
And have it be realistic also.
Yeah. It has to be realistic, it has to look at fiscal impacts on the town, and things like schools and also services to the elderly and services for everybody.
Yeah.
You know?
I think if there's one thing that I would like to see in it, and there's a few issues that I personally would like to see, you know, economic development, you know, transportation issues, but we need to be competitive as a community, and that affects pretty much everything. So, competitive in our education, competitive in our economic development, competitive in the housing that we kind of offer, because we do want, obviously, you know, new families coming in, but we also want to keep citizens that have been here for years and years and years and who want to stay in the towns that they grew up in and that they were raised in or that they raised their children in. So, competitiveness is going to be important when developing this new master plan, in my opinion.
I agree. I agree. And especially in the economic development aspect of that, where we have an industrial park, we have extensive business districts, we want to attract businesses that are going to be successful and pay taxes without-
And a diverse-
And a diverse set that will, that will serve the needs of the town without putting great burden of services on the town. So, when they put in a warehouse in the industrial park, it really doesn't put a lot of extra services on the town, you know? But keeping that industrial park full keeps the taxes coming in, and that's important.
The balance.
So, we have to be able to attract businesses for, because we've got the workforce, transportation, to get a workforce here, the appropriate tax levels, and things like that. Yeah? And that's where we look to our development expert here.
Yeah, well, I don't know about an expert, but I spend a lot of time doing it. I'm concerned about apartments because the trends obviously are changing towards apartments and that kind of living with millennials. 330 Chestnut, if that gets approved and goes forward, they'll go quite a ways to start alleviating the pressure for people that want to live in an apartment. But in addition to that, I think we need to think about other places, either near or not near, I don't know yet what the answer would be, for additional apartments because we have a lot of millennials, for an example, that choose not to own a home and need a, you know, a good place to live, commute to work, and a nice community to live in and so forth. It's a different kind of living than we're all used to because we all grew up thinking that as a house and a picket fence, but that's not the way it is nowadays. It's changing, which is the 330 Chestnut project, for example.
So, I think that, since Bethany set this up, I can't share, I can't invite, the share icon is grayed out.
Gotcha.
So, I'm going to email you this information right now and then we'll work on.
That's fine.
Okay.
So, Connie, you don't have to do this tonight because obviously, if we get it, we're not going to read it tonight.
Oh, that's all right, but at least I'll get them, at least I'll get it out there.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else people want to bring up at this point? Yeah, I think it's important that we get moving on this, and the MVP is a start, but I, once we get the outline, I think we need to start thinking about filling that in as rapidly as possible. Having gone through the open space and recreation plan process and the charter process-
What was the timeline on those types of open space?
It took us about six months, okay? And that was fast because what we did was we took the old plan that we had and basically updated with all the information, discussed new goals for going forward because the goals were different now than they were in the past, and held some listening sessions and put the verbiage together. And what we did was, one person wrote basically an outline, and then we sat and we went through it, line by line, and, you know, worked on it. In general, my experience has been the best way to write a plan like this, or even the way we did the charter, is to have at least an outline that you can discuss and question and change-
And build off of.
And build off of, rather than sit around as a group of, you know, eight people and try to write it together, because that is a very, very slow way of moving forward. I also think it's a really good idea, as Connie is suggesting, to use, to steal from other towns as much as possible.
No, that is-
Okay? Because then they're going to have our goals, but they're going to have the outline, they're going to have the overall structure that we need, and a lot of the wording that we need in certain parts of it. And then we can adjust that to our goals as we develop those goals.
Yeah, and there's many communities that are demographically similar to us, so looking at their type of what they've done, because I mean, we do have, obviously, an original master plan, but that master plan is, for all intents and purposes, totally outdated coming from the 70s. Not that that's a really, really long time ago, but it kind of is.
Yes, it was.
Yeah. Yes, it was. So, not to offend anybody, but it really was. So, a lot of technology, economic development was not what it was, not what it is now than what it was in 1970s. So, yeah, keeping those things in mind, I mean, six months would, it sounds great, but that's probably not, I mean, I don't want to do it too quick, but I also don't want to do it too long. So, striking that right type of balance is going to be very important, I think.
I agree. And we also have another document called Enhancing East Long Meadow that certain people in this room helped write, and Marilyn in particular, and was never adopted by the town, but was an outline of a path forward for the town. And I think we eventually need to distribute that. Do you have a copy of that?
It's online, actually.
Okay.
It should be on the website. And so, this master plan falls under your purview, so you can make your recommendation, but the adoption is up to you. So, this is not something like our zoning bylaw that has to be petitioned to Town Council and then vetted publicly, I mean, you want to vet it publicly, but this is your plan. So, it's not as cumbersome, if you will, to move it through.
I'm sorry, enhancing, so that's on the town's website and that just is sort of-
Should be under the Planning Board. Let's just, I'm pretty sure we uploaded that one too on the Planning and Community Development website page or webpage.
Well, while you're doing that, I just want to say, I want to echo what John said is, I always have a concern about master plans being realistic. When I go to a lot of towns, I read their master plans, and after I get done, I say there's not a chance in the world anything in this master plan could ever possibly happen here, even though this is-
You can't put something that's sort of a fantasy. I mean, ideally, we could probably construct this perfect thing that we-
Well, I'll read these master plans that look like Nantucket, and I'll say to myself, "How in the world are you going to accomplish that?" But they're wonderful master plans, but they're never going to happen because they're unrealistic. So, I want to make sure that what we talk about is things that actually could happen,
right?
You know, the best that we can create that's still realistic.
And address the future demographic changes, but also the market conditions that they stand or what they're projected to be.
Sure.
So, if you go to the quick links on the, on the planning page, under Quick Links, which is on the right side of the-
Right. The right side, okay.
So, a lot of the goals would be just improving what we have already that already exists, probably. That's realistic. And then evaluating what we were thinking-
So, I'm sorry, while we're talking about the Enhancing East Long Meadow, it's titled Master Plan for Improved Business, Commercial and Industrial Zoning.
Okay. So it is there.
It is there.
Okay.
Oh, you heard us.
So I encourage you all to take a look at that, you know, as, this was an interim document that a lot of work went into. And it's more recent than the master plan. So it's also something that can give you some ideas where we're going forward.
So I'm trying to email that, probably mail the link right now.
Sure.
I also think part of master plans that exist is that they're hard to read. I think we need to make this master plan more accessible for, and easier for people to read. If not, you know, a one or two sheet that will give very broad and then quick links to a more in-depth, if it interests people. But the idea of, people aren't going to want to read 50 pages, 30 pages, you know, it's too much. They want to read two pages.
Do you want an executive summary upfront?
Yes.
That, that lists the goals and all the important stuff.
And making the language not as cumbersome.
That, that's, that's half of it, is the, the cumbersome language.
Yeah.
Let's, you know, I'm not saying dumb it down, but at the same time, make it more interesting to read.
Well, you need to avoid jargon, okay? That's something I've learned through PVPC, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Their documents are full of acronyms and nobody knows what they mean.
Yeah.
You know? Because they deal with state and federal grants. All of it have numbered programs and letters that don't mean a whole lot unless you're the grantee, in which case, you know, this money can go for streets and this goes for sidewalks and this goes for bike lanes, and they're all different, you know?
It's important because it'll place more faith if people read that one or two-page executive summary. They'll have a better understanding of what's going on and they'll place more trust in this board and the town at large because, you know, they could, they know what's going on. And, you know, I mean, I, I've read some of these documents before and I've been on this board now for, for a little bit, but even I sometimes have a challenge, you know, five, 10 pages in, trying to, you know, keep a focus because there's just so much there that it's hard to break it all down. So I could only imagine the average person that isn't involved at all in the process or doesn't, you know, watch things often that go on in Elcat, they're not going to know really what's going on. But this is going to be a very important part, guiding document of where the town goes in the future, in the next 10, 20 years.
Yeah, I like the idea of the executive summary because I don't want to have to sit and dig through a document for five hours to figure out what it's trying to tell me.
Yeah.
I mean, I can go back and drill down on the detail that's important to me, but there's a lot of things that I don't necessarily need to know, to know what the feeling is in the town on master plan, on the master plan.
Yeah, agreed. And the other thing to remember in any planning document is that if there's something that you want or might want in the future to get a grant for, from the state or the feds, it better be in the master plan because you get a lot more points if it's supportive of a planning document than if you just come in and say, "We want to do this." So like on the recreation plan, we included potential upgrades to Heritage Park because we knew that parks and recreation was going to be going for grants to that. And if it was not in the plan, they were less likely to get the grants. So if you think about things like complete streets, which is providing streets for pedestrians, bicycles and vehicles, okay? And other aspects of planning like that on infrastructure, if there's anything that we might want to go for a grant for in the future. For instance, at our last meeting, Colin, our RT Director, was talking about having conduit in new subdivisions for municipal, municipally-controlled fiber, okay? If that's something we're really looking to do in the future, that ought to be in the master plan. Because it's, may not be something the town wants to fund, but that they might be able to get a grant from somebody for something to do that, for emergency planning, for instance, or emergency communications. So we need to think about those things. And particularly, I think we need to poll the departments of the town, asking them what they're going to be asking for going forward. And that can include the schools as well.
So you know, we meet once a month to discuss, as department heads, to discuss the master plan, so I will put that out there. And they do plan to bring you information.
Good.
To help develop this master plan because they are a direct line of communication with their particular democrat.
And they're the best ones to know what's going on currently in real time and potential problems they might see going forward.
So I'm worried if there might be a conflict between two things said, you know, don't have a pie in the sky, but put as much as we can in. Is it possible to weight items that we find more or less important where tier one, tier two, tier three, so they're in there, but we have priorities built in to the master plan?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. And also, it's important not to be too specific, okay? Because things will change, technology will change, state programs will change over time. So if you can put in your needs in general terms, you're better off than if you say, "Well, we want a new fire truck" or something. Because, you know, or we want a certain kind of fiber optic when it might be 5G in five years and no more fiber optic.
So I guess the, the difference would be instead of talking about complete streets, we talk about increased mobility.
Yeah.
For the populace.
Yeah.
And then that would cover anything else. That could cover, you know, transportation, that could cover bike paths, that can cover complete streets and so on.
You can say as, for, an example would be complete streets, but that would not be the limit of what you're looking for.
So do maybe we want to consider what element we want to focus on as planning board members, maybe, or do you want to just look through it first, kind of go through what, what I've posted, I've shared with you? I will, I do want to note in that particular plan, it is a coastal community, so they've got a harbor and waterfront section. Obviously, we're not going to be considering that, but if you go back to the original PowerPoint, kind of breaks down the elements as well as the additional elements you might want to incorporate. So if there's another heading or another chapter, then by all means, we can do that. So I did want to caution you when you're looking at that.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think we've covered most of what Glenn discussed tonight. So unless there's other business before the board, I ask for a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
No, I'll make.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Sorry, we did not, we're not able to do more on the mixed-use zoning, but respect the county councils' deliberate approach to this, and we're very happy with that. Thank you.